All right. Good evening, everyone. Can I have the roll call, please?
Gibson, here.
Papler, here.
Cochrane, Ormsby, here. Satterfield.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wenland.
Here. All right, thank you. We had minutes from the meeting of July 17th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from July 17th.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 17th, 2024. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, the minutes are recommended for approval. So again, good evening, everyone. We have, looks like, six people in the audience, so appreciate you attending. We are a recommending body appointed by the city council and the mayor to remove, review site plans, rezonings and such. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight, so our, our order will be a little different than normal. If you have a particular case that you'd like to provide input at the appropriate time, I will recognize the audience. And there's a podium to my right and to your left back there. We would love to hear your input. So with that, Taylor, we will begin.
Thank you, Chairman. Just going down the agenda, the first case, 2334, has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant.
Yep.
So we'll move on to the second case, case 2444. We had a request by the applicant to defer to the next meeting. So staff asked, so I'll be at the September 18th meeting.
Okay.
Item six, case 2442, we do have a presentation for. That's correct. Twenty-four forty, that should be. That should be twenty-four fifty-two, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. This is a rezoning application, Genesis, by, from Genesis Health. So the applicant is Genesis Health. This is a request to rezone a 51-acre tract of land located south of Forest Grove Drive, west of Middle Road and north of Hopewell Avenue, from its current A1 agricultural urban reserve district to UHI Urban High Intensity Development Character Area District. The master plan, this is a master planned area.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry. This master planned area contains mixed uses that include hospital, healthcare, healthcare center, medical office building, medical facility, off-street parking structure and commercial retail. Existing surrounding uses include farmland, the Center for Alcohol Drug and Drug Services and a church. There are existing uses across city right-of-way, across south of Hopewell, we have single-family residential. North of Forest Grove, we have commercial part of the TBK Sports Complex area. But everything else surrounding it is either undeveloped or those uses specified. The current, the future land use map recently adopted designates this area of mixture of categories. We have commercial, community commercial, greenway, mixed transitional and urban activity area. I'll go into that analysis in a later slide. And as mentioned, that current zoning is A1, pretty much in all the surrounding uses. We do have a recently rezoned tract of C2 to the east, which we'll be reviewing tonight in the site plan, and a recently rezoned R4 tract just to the west, but has not yet been developed or platted. So looking at the future use, the future land use compatibility with this rezoning requests, staff took the submitted master plan, which we'll review here shortly, and looked at and overlaid that with our newly adopted future land use map. Urban, urban activity area is a compliant district for our UHI Development Character Area, and that is located, as shown on our map, along Middle Road, and then also our community commercial area is a compliant area. Other areas are shown as mixed transitional, which is a, the second tier, pretty much of our density-intensity matrix. And overlaying that master plan, staff contends that the densities and intensities shown in that plan are compatible with the future land use in the comprehensive plan. So you have the proposed hospital and building intensity and densities located east along Middle Road or northeast along Forest Grove Road corner, and then less intense, so single-story units, commercial units, and less dense commercial located farther west and south on this proposal. Taking a look at the submitted master plan, so this is a development character area. Unlike a typical Euclidean rezoning, a requirement of a DCA area is to submit a master plan. So you're really rezoning it to what isn't submitted in the master plan, and then looking through the criteria, how the compatibilities of what's contained within the rezoning, but also how it is compatible with different adjacent developments and future adjacent developments. So looking at this, the submitted master plan concepts mixture of uses, as mentioned, hospital, office, medical office, healthcare, parking, retail and a medical facility. We have proposed public roads connecting to Forest Grove Drive and Middle Road. Multiple entries are off Middle Road. Staff has recommended a change to this master plan. The proposed roundabout is where it's located. Staff is recommending it move farther south so for future alignment with 63rd Avenue. 63rd Avenue isn't even located on this drawing, but it is a, it's a road that was, comes off Century Heights additions to farther east. That would align for a future road network, so we could have some alignment there. And then all future development located east of Middle Road and west of Century Heights additions. We're kind of planning for future, maybe connector roads or collector roads. So that was one comment, and that will be, is being redesigned by the applicant. They just cannot design it in time for this public hearing. So that's one comment, one note. Also included in this master plan are sidewalks along those public roads, landscaping trees, buffering areas along adjacent and future, future and existing development, detention ponds noted. There's a lot, a lot of detail in this plan that is part of the review of the actual development character area. So you have floor area ratios, so total square feet of these developments, number of stories of these buildings, and then the types of uses noted by color. So a lot of information here to analyze. But this is the, the master plan that we use from a rezoning, if approved for rezoning, then going into the site plan for this DCA, we then look back to, to make sure it's still complying to that master plan. And if needed, the applicant would be able to amend through the proper procedures this overall master plan. All right, I think I covered that all. One note, the retail is fronted, there's some retail fronting north on Forest Grove Drive. You have three buildings and then a detention pond. And then the southern quarter of this development is also commercial retail. So that portion would be across the street from existing single-family development on Hopewell, and they are showing one connection there on Hopewell. So this is probably the least intense development as far as number of users or at least number of employees located in that area, and is what's envisioned in our comprehensive plan from a more of a mixed transitional use. So you can, single-story, commercial spec buildings or retail buildings are shown there. Other note, so the hospital is a three-story hospital. Adjacent to that is also a three-story, three-story parking structure. So a lot of the parking contained in the proposal is in that parking structure, I think, somewhere in the, like, 900 spaces. Staff would, is probably highlighting that area for the site plan, upon site plan procedures, to really look at how that can properly transition, so that'll be a tall building, how it can transition into some of the single-story, maybe two-story structures that will exist farther west, so. Also noting, this is a hospital, so there'll be emergency vehicles and helicopter visiting and exiting the site, but that is located in the northeast portion of this proposal. So really you'll have great access off of Middle Road Roundabout, Forest Grove, Middle Road Roundabout, and then of course, the Interstate 80 Middle Road interchange. And then that's also an area that's really surrounded by existing and future commercials. So I think staff contends it's a very, it's a good site for that use. And the hospital has stated that they do have procedures and compliance checks for when lights are on, sirens are on, et cetera, to make it at least intrusive to the surrounding developments. One submittal requirement for a DCA is also the character. So something that we do not usually review in a, in a rezoning or even a site plan really, unless it's an overlay district, is the, what's the character of the building, the design. So this is submittal of a palette of different sightings, et cetera, character of what the proposed development will be. It does look, a lot of glass, a lot of wood siding, what you expect kind of from a hospital and what exists at their current campus and east campus in Davenport. Another kind of a proposed concept elevation of what some of the character of the renderings would look like. The first, this is rezoning, so all rezonings per Bettendorf Code go through that criteria analysis, which I've covered most, and I won't read word for word, but I can kind of breeze through that criteria first. As stated, this rezoning does, staff contends this conforms to the future land use map. This amendment is consistent with goals identified in the future land use section, but it's attracting businesses, developing new streets, roads, just a number of different things, enhancing character in the area as well. Some number of things are being met for those goals. The third criteria item about the negatively impacting nearby parcels, that was really identified by looking at the, the location of those intense uses versus the least lesser intense uses and how they are addressing buffering and location of ponds. And staff did note, when we get to that site plan stage, for a couple of those structures that we'll really have to zero in on how to best transition those structures for the, more of the form of the building. Any potential externalities have been considered. The applicant and then staff has analyzed any potential externalities and noted in the previous slides, some of those. Really, there's no surrounding, limited surrounding development, and then future surrounding development has been contemplated sufficiently. There are adequate public utilities in the area and proposed roads and utilities, detention ponds, et cetera, are being contemplated with this proposed rezoning. The pattern of development in this area has been examined, and staff contends the, this higher intensity, UHI zoning district is the appropriate district for this area. It's evidenced in the comprehensive plan and this type of use, a mixed hospital campus is really what I think the city envisioned on the Middle Road corridor and the Forest Grove Drive corridor. This is going to be some of our busiest roads in the future, especially after, you know, development really gets built out that way, north and filling in east of Middle Road, now west of Middle Road. So this, I think, is a appropriate use for this area. And then the last rezoning, this amendment is in the public interest, not solely in the applicant's interest. Staff contends there's multiple goals that are being met by, in the comprehensive plan, met by this rezoning request, and it's not just the applicant's interest. The second step of our, when the first submitted DCA review, there's specific criteria that need to be met by, mostly by that master plan submitted, and staff, I've gone over many of them. But there's also some narratives that need to be submitted, just describing how the applicant plans to address compatibility, transitioning, a number of other criteria. So I'll breeze through this. It's a lot to go through. This is our first big DCA, I think, we've done in a long, well, for a long time. But it is needed to, it's part of the steps. Specific land uses have been addressed through, throughout the master plan, as noted, colors and by height and floor area. The UHI districts, the proposed intensities of development, there is specific max densities for UHI, just like we have other zoning districts. We have, usually for residential, we have dwelling units per acre. For commercial or non-residential uses, we have floor area ratios. So that's a number of feet, square feet of development related to how many square feet the development lands on. So this is 51 acres or over 2 million square feet of land and about 692,000 feet of actual structure floor area. When looking at our DCA standards, they could, we could allow up to four, four-to-one ratio, which is pretty, pretty large, pretty intense. This development's only, is producing or showing about .3. So it's not a very dense by our sta, or compared to our standards. And that, I will note, that does include over 300 square feet of parking garage, so it's a lot of, there's still a lot of open space in this development. They've really designed it with, with the large detention pond, buffer areas. There'll be landscaping in the parking areas as well. So I want to note, there's still a lot of open space despite the urban high-intensity designation. Circulation has been addressed, has shown on the master plan. I mentioned the staff comment of the roundabout, so they are addressing that. We, staff would comment that it's not really in the applicant's power, but there is that property west of the development, they have the Center for Alcohol Drug Services and a vacant property. And then you have a approved rezoning for residential property. There would be, I think, benefit to the public and to these properties if at some time in the future, if, if it was available, if their, or proposal was given for some type of connection through that property, just to improve circulation in that whole area. Because right now, each development has kind of separate circulation, all fronting on either Forest Grove or on the Middle Road or Hopewell. So some type of connector would be beneficial to everyone. As mentioned, sidewalks, trails, there's even sidewalk connections proposed in the development, throughout the development. And staff will work with the applicant and adjacent property owners to increase that trail connectivity. There's some, a proposed trail showing, going up to that R4 zoning tract. So we'll investigate that further, but we do need cooperation from adjacent property owners. Natural resource areas, so that, this area has, this is really referencing our, any flood plain, any soil issues, et cetera. This area virtually has none. It's farmland, pretty much 100% tilled with the ag dwelling on it. There is Pigeon Creek, the really up-headwaters of Pigeon Creek are located southwest of this, and that will be retained. And on the south, on the other side of that Pigeon Creek water source, there will be a, there's existing a communication tower, and that will remain. Stormwater strategy has been sufficiently addressed. There's ponds denoted in the master plan, and that stormwater management plan is shown also how the water flow is connecting between ponds and throughout the development. Staff already commented on that architect, architectural design, and we feel that this is a complement surrounding characteristics or character in the area. And this is an exact quote from their, their submittal, but it really establishes their branding and color palette and kind of has a modern development tones as well. The land use compatibility portion, I won't, it has, was submitted, and it's a direct quote from the applicant, but really it's a, the staff, I think, has summarized pretty much what they submitted as well. Why, why buildings were located in certain areas, the intention of including those trails, sidewalks, the why density or the building form in certain areas versus lesser building form in other areas. Those are all addressed in that narrative, which are included in the staff report, and staff concurs with their evaluation. The general scam, the general plan for landscaping, it, staff contends the submitted plan meets the requirement. It really identifies open spaces and conceptual form. More detailed, of course, information will be at those site development plan stages for all of these buildings. Given everything and the evidence raised and reasons stated in the staff analysis, staff recommends the Plains zoning commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning from A1 to UHI, case 2452, and I can take any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to accuse myself of this. Okay, did you catch that, Lisa? Thank you, Taylor. Mark, anything to add before we go to the public hearing?
I would note the applicant had a public meeting that they held at one of their own facilities, the 12th of the month, I believe. They distributed via US mail. There were a couple residents that attended. Some other area developers actually attended, maybe the majority, and it was well received, and staff were invited and were able to observe the proceedings. We appreciate that. Just a quick thing to point out. Taylor did a great job on this staff report. This is development character area style zoning. We don't use that very often.
Right.
We've only got two others in the city, but you get a lot up front, as you just witnessed. But that's the, that information that will there, will be there for you as you make other decisions or recommendations through this process, going to site plan and so on. So nice to have all that information up front. It's different than traditional zoning. If we went C3, said, hey, it's a box of C3, come what may, as long as it fits in C3, it's fine. This is much different. Because of development character area, you have to be very, very direct up front. Give us a lot of information. We get to review that, and then we'll hold you to that, if you will, going forward. Looks like a, looks like a pretty good product.
Yeah, no, exciting. And there's a much better feeling from this side of the table when we've got that kind of information up front instead of a big open space with no idea what's coming. So that's, that's awesome. Appreciate it. All right, so at this point, we have, we'll open a public hearing. So Lisa, is there publication, a proof of publication for case 24-042?
Yes.
Okay, we have noticed the publication. We will open a public hearing and ask at this point, is there any public comment relative to this case from those in the audience? This is where you speak or forever hold your peace, like we're getting married. Okay, nobody there? All right. I will close the public hearing, and then I will come back to the commission for discussion regarding this project.
I like, I like the look of the project. I like what's going on here. The one, the one piece I want to make sure we get right on all of this is the, the traffic flow. Because this is a big chunk of Middle Road. So my, my first question is, is it our goal to avoid traffic lights from?
Yes.
The two, okay.
Yes, so the, the concept very much aligns with what we're planning to do with the remainder of Middle Road. So we currently have a contract that's being worked on, and I think I've talked about it, for the, at least the design of the reconstruction of Middle from where we left off, just out of Forest Grove, all the way down south of Crow Creek, basically everything that's not four lanes now. The intent and the developer and the engineer were aware of this is to limit left turns on Middle Road. That's why you see the, the one roundabout. That would be a dual-lane roundabout. So we're trying to, and so all of Middle Road will have a boulevard, similar to what has been built on Forest Grove and Middle Road north of here. So all the access points that you see coming in there will end up being right-in, right-out in the future. The same thing that you will see when we look at one of the cases later tonight, the Quad City Bank and Trust, same thing. It's to, with the anticipated traffic volumes that we were going to see on Middle, we'll be north of 18, 20,000 cars a day, probably pretty easily when these developments occur. We do not want people trying to cross four lanes or five lanes of traffic with those left turns. So that's how we're going to restrict those, push that traffic to these north-south collectors that will take you through the additions. So yes, it's very well thought out and very aligned with what we're planning.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
So Brent, do you foresee delineators from the start? Or is that something you'll watch and see if they're needed?
We'll watch and see. It'll really depend on their timing versus ours. The design's going to take probably a year for us. There's no dedicated funding, but I can tell you, we legitimately just had council briefings on this earlier this week, and council understands the urgency. We have to find a way to fund Middle Road very quickly. Already started talking about some strategies for it. We'll probably have to chunk it out into some smaller pieces. You know, the design will cover everything. The priority between this project and the Quad City Bank and Trust one would be to get us down to Hopewell. But yes, if we end up having to do that in the short term, we would.
So, so your goal is to align the Middle Road development with the development of these two really significant projects?
Yes, so we don't end up in the situation that we had to be with Forest Grove and Middle, where we had to do all that reconstruction while those places were already operating.
Right.
It, it almost certainly won't be ahead of time, but we'll be as close as we can, and I think in a much better position than we were previously.
Taylor, you, you mentioned public roads within this development. Can you show us on here where those would be?
Sure, the, really the all-concepted roads, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brent, but that's, the proposal is to
So everything.
Dedicate those roads upon, when that, when we get to that stage. That's, yeah, not anything.
It's the north-south ones. What, what it wouldn't be, would be like, you see the smaller retail down at the end? That north-south road would be, yes. But the drivelanes in would not be. So the, it's kind of outlined with the green plantings. Yep, that would be all right-of-way.
And so would all the east-west connections out to Middle Road.
Out to Middle Road, okay.
Yeah, what we're trying to avoid is a Falcon Avenue situation, where you have a private street that connects two public streets. It, actually Falcon was private. It has since become public, but obviously you drive it once, and you can see the kind of shape it's in. It wasn't built to city standards. We're going to be out there probably very soon, having to reconstruct that. So we want to make sure, just from the start, obviously provides a benefit long-term for the developer. We control the right-of-way. We make sure it's built to city standards. We'll take care of the snow removal, so you don't have, you know, piles getting pushed onto private streets. It's really the best case for, for both the city and the developer.
And the feeder streets here would be right-in, right-out, except for the roundabout? Okay.
Yep, at full buildout on Middle Road.
Yeah.
And, and so the road that we're seeing on the map, that's the projected location of the roundabout farther south?
At the concept stage right now, to Taylor's point, if, if we're able to shift it any further south, we'd like to try to align it a little more with 63rd. If it absolutely doesn't work with that cluster of buildings there, we'll make the east leg work. The nice part is, we don't have anything coming at us on the east side right now. The Quad City Bank and Trust project is further north, so we could align that when future development comes. And it couldn't hurt to, you know, have it be a little offset and provide some, one, some character, and two, a little bit of traffic calming as, as you come around the curve.
And even though this is a DCA development character area style zoning, and we get this really, you know, detailed concept plan, we still have a site plan, and it will be just as thoroughly reviewed and in the same level of information as required.
Site plans, preliminary plat, final plat, and you still have all that.
Right. Taylor, I have a question, just for my own education. In the section on stormwater, you use the term vehicular use screening.
I think I was referring.
Well, I don't know what that means, as it relates to stormwater.
It might have made that term up, but no, what I'm referring to, though.
You bought it.
No, I'm not buying it. I want to know what it means.
What I'm referring to is really the, along the parking areas, you'll see the generalized landscape concept. You have trees buffering along the, the parking lots. But then, especially along this trail corridor right here, it's not one open giant, giant parking lot. They've kind of broken it up with trees, so it doesn't feel like a vast expanse of parking, especially when you have this retail, which is really a separate use than the medical facility. They've broken it up into kind of quadrants of different areas with that landscaping. And then the stormwater also helps from the adjacent development, because I will note, this is this area where they show this proposed street, very conceptual street. That street will probably have to be where they're showing it, just based on the given topography, et cetera. And this is likely to be a residential area as well. So providing that screening from, you know, vehicular traffic, parking with cars, lights on and off, and then also the buffering with the pond, I think is pretty important versus just kind of having the bare minimum of traffic island, or planting islands, yeah.
Ha, having that in place before the residential development, I think, is important. I, I did have another question. You talked about the parking structure and transitioning to the buildings, to the to the buildings to the west. You see that connector as just a road? Is it, uh, a trail? Is it, uh?
So I think
A bridge?
The, the parking structure, the, the compatibility of that transitioning to the west is one thing. So that's a, that'll be a three-story structure. Um, so that building form, um, and there's definitely ways to do this architecturally, um, with some design elements, uh, maybe plantings plus design elements. They are providing like, they are denoting a buffer there, but really to make it so it's not a giant, uh, bare concrete block in front of, cause that'll be viewed from pretty far away. Um, so that's one transition I was talking about. And then from the road I mentioned in, um, previous slides, it, we, this isn't, this would only be an opportunity and we don't know if it will be an opportunity. Um, but if there was availability to have a connection to some, to the west, that would be beneficial. But really that's not, this is owned by someone separate. This is owned by somebody separate. So it's, it's just kind of, we're really master planning the very large area.
Yeah, it's not a condition of our analysis. It's just food for thought.
Just comment.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
I was curious, you said this area is DCA. How much of this area out that in this region is considered development character?
We have two other development character areas, uh, in, in our community.
Right.
One at, um, fifty-third, the Yelsey subdivision. Uh, and then if you remember Glum Brook Circle North and Glum Brook Circle South, we spent a lot of time doing DCA, uh, work there with some site plan revisions. Um, this is our third one and probably, um, what, what I would say is kind of hits the mark of what a DCA is about. It's a big development character area or master plan area, if you want to use that term. Um, so other cities might use that term. And this really hits the mark. We have a big campus complex come in, lots of uses, you know, has a retail feel, has a medical office, has a hospital, all those different things coming in. Can we get from the future land use map to a zoning district that aligns with that future land use? And the DCA lets us do that and kind of move the parts around if we need to. So I think it's the mark. Well.
City of Bendorf was able to designate it as that due to the use?
It is, it is before you today to go from, um, A1 zoning to DCA urban high intensity zoning.
So, and it may follow up on that. The, I mean, the question is this whole, what's shown before you would be the rezoning tract, and this is part of that rezoning. So the whole area would be UHI per this master plan. They're kind, they're together. Um, and then in analyzing that compatibility, we don't, we no longer, remember we went away with the same type, the name, future land use category name and the zoning district name to kind of separate them. Um, the area that's, we have a lot of mixed uses on here. So we don't have one parcel as one land use category anymore. We have lots of, we really wanted to communicate what, what the transition areas, also communicate where we need some open space and greenways. All those things were combined. Um, so really this, I would say like dividing it kind of in half like this is where your in, more intense areas are, your highest intensities, either by the urban activity area or your community commercial areas. And then the mixed transitional areas of the west, um, and south. So staff took that analysis. We have to, you know, see if it's, is, uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan, the future land use map. And using this, um, really identified the most intense areas. Intense meaning your bulk, your biggest bulk floor area, your areas where you're going to have likely the higher customer volume or employee volume versus some of your single story. This'll, I don't, we don't know the exact retail uses or restaurant uses. Um, but say if the restaurant, they're only open for certain hours. And if it's retail, you have likely some office retail, maybe medical retail. Um, so less intense. That's kind of where, versus analysis of when you're talking about residential, you're just looking at dwelling units. So that's, that's the, it's a little more, it's a longer analysis of the compatibility than looking at the chart and saying, yep, it fits. Cause it's all one to one. So.
Well, maybe to make it, um, define something by what it's not. Um, if we didn't have the development character area, um, which the master plan is a way to look at that. If we didn't have that, we'd do a, a rezoning for the commercial. We'd do a rezoning for the medical office building. We do a rezoning for the hospital. So we'd put the applicant through three rezonings. So we've looking very specifically at different, at little pieces, very myopically, where the DCA lets us look at all, all together and plan it all together and kind of start with that end in mind and not be looking at a little piece of rezoning here, then a little piece of rezoning up there, and then a piece of rezoning in the middle. We've had to do that in other areas. Um, it's not fun. It can cause confusion and things don't line up. This takes care of that.
Seems like a great location for it.
Yeah.
Mission members appreciate that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing here at this stage of your, um, proposal. It's open, it's, um, mobile, it's walkable. Um, it's got water features. Um, there's a certain, or not certain, there's a clear need in this side of town for developing. And I'll be one of your big customers as I age, um, up there. So.
You have O R A right around the corner.
O R A is there. Yeah, you can, I can get a full rebuild right up here. So, um, no, in all sincerity, I think there's a need in the market. It fits in this quarter. I look back at our original plan. I've been doing this for seventeen years and we had some great aspirations for this end of town. And this and the other one we've got coming tonight really tend to, um, codify that direction. And I'm really excited to see it. So, um, thanks for all the work so far.
I, I would like to add a comment to what you just said, Roy. When we first saw this T B K complex, a sports complex, it was, um, I don't know, in my mind, a little bit marginal, but let's, let's go with it. And look at what has sprung from that. I mean, th- this is a, this is an anchor development right here. And we'll be talking about another one shortly right across the street. And they're all there because of a sports complex. It, it's really fascinating to me from the, the vision of the city and the development that one project like that can, can drive all of this.
Yeah.
It, it's, I don't, somebody will write a paper about it someday, I think.
I think they call it a premier city.
Yeah, there you go. Your thesis.
Yeah. Got a head start. Yeah. Anyone else from the commission? Anyone else in the audience or anyone from the audience? All right. We'll come back to the commission. I need a roll, I need a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case number twenty-four dash oh-five-two, the rezoning from A1 to UHI, subject to staff recommendations.
And just for confirmation, it is oh-five-two despite it showing as oh-four-two on the agenda, right? It is oh-five-two. Okay. All right. We have a motion from Ann.
A second.
Okay, Scott, we have a second from Scott, and then we'll do a roll call on the motion. Lisa?
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Yes.
Wormsby?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Upstate.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, case twenty-four dash zero-five-two is recommended for approval.
All right.
Okay.
Our next case on the agenda, item seven, is twenty-four five-five, uh, final plat of Wilderness Point, third addition. The applicant is, uh, Luke Miller for Jared Kirkoff. Um, this area is located west of Criswell and north of Wilderness Point, first and second additions, um, just on the city border. The final plat is proposed as a twenty lot, single-family residential subdivision. The proposed plat is the final phase of the Wilderness Point additions, uh, part of a preliminary plat. Taking a li- look at the future land use and zoning, uh, this area is designated as neighborhood light on the future land use map. And the zoning designation is R1 single-family residence district. Uh, both are compatible, um, the current zoning and the future land use map and the proposed uses and density are compliant. Uh, this is the preliminary plat for the Wilderness Point additions, um, was approved back in twenty nineteen. Very few changes exist between the preliminary plat and the proposed final plat. I think depending how you count, there might be one less lot in this proposed final plat in this area. It's kind of hard to tell where the phases start, but it's really identical. They've built this out, um, as concepted. The final plat, uh, lot sizes range from a little over twenty, I think twenty-three thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet. So it's about half an acre and up. Um, stormwater detention is provided off-site on out lot L in Wilderness Point, first edition. Uh, Woody Creek Lane and Birch Hill Court, uh, are public streets shown for access. Woody Creek Lane will connect to future development north of this plat and a temporary turnaround easement is shown on the adjoining property until that street is extended. So going back to the, kind of the concept here, but this will all connect to Megan Avenue and actually continue further when we have future developments further north. And so you'll have a lot better connectivity towards Criswell, um, for all this residential development. All right. Staff recommends approval of case twenty-four fifty-five, final plat of Wilderness Point, third edition, and I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Mark, anything from staff?
Knocking out on this one.
All right. Questions and comments from the commission, please? Pretty straightforward. Anybody?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right. We'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve case number two-four dash zero-five-five, subject to staff recommendations.
A second.
Oh, that's a tie.
Okay, go ahead.
Lisa, you call that one. All right. We have a motion in a second by somebody. Who'd you call it for, Lisa? Janessa. Okay. Motion in a second to approve case twenty-four dash zero-five-five. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Thank you. Case twenty-four dash zero-five-five is recommended for approval. All right. That takes us to twenty-four zero-five-six.
All right.
And seven.
Yep. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I'll present the next two items, twenty-four, five-six and twenty-four, five-seven, uh, final plat for F G holding's fifth addition and then associated site plan for, um, on lot three of that addition. All right. So some background, um, the applicant is Kevin Kellner, uh, Focus Real Estate. Uh, this is a final plat for a, um, should be, yeah, four lot, uh, three lot subdivisions. No, four lot subdivision because it amends slightly the lot that's on Iron T's lot. As you can see, uh, on the map, the red area is the current lot lines and then the proposed lot lines for this plat are shown in green. Um, so it's really just changing this portion of the Iron T lot and then creating three new lots that will front Forest Grove Drive. The site plan associated with this is on lot three and proposes a one building containing, um, ten thousand seven hundred square feet of floor area. And the proposed uses associated with that are automotive, automotive services, retail and restaurant. I will note that there was a previously approved plat, um, and associated site plan that, um, were located in the far northwest corner of the Iron T, uh, area. That plat was approved by P and Z and subsequently approved by council, but was never recorded. Um, and that area, that concept has been abandoned. And this is the new concept, um, and area for that, uh, this, that's why we have another F G holding's fifth addition. A little confusing. Um, and then that site plan that was approved is nearly identical to what, um, what we're seeing tonight. Uh, future land use map doesn't, makes this area as community commercial and the zoning is C three. The plat and the site plan comply with those bulk zoning standards, the district, and the uses are permitted. Um, here's a look at the plats. Those three new lots, as noted, are created, uh, far south and front Forest Grove Drive. I will note no access is allowed directly on to Forest Grove Drive. Access will be provided via the, um, private drive to the far east. Um, it's like the employee entrance farther north. Um, and then they'll have two curb cuts on the private drive. And then also via easements, uh, on this plat and other plats, it'll have access on competition drive, um, a curb cut there. Stormwater attention is provided off-site in regional ponds for the T B K, Iron T sport, uh, development. This is just showing where that, uh, lot line is for the proposed, uh, site development plan. So we're on lot three, far eastern area here. So as mentioned, those are your two access points. Um, this is proposed automotive use and retail and restaurant. A total of eighty-six parking spaces are shown, including forty-eight, which do meet the, um, minimum or exceed the minimum. Um, this, uh, proposal includes drive-through doors, which are located on the east end of the building, um, for that auto service use. Uh, there is one screen dumpster located in the northwest corner of development, um, and stormwater attention is provided off-site, as mentioned. Um, taking a look at that floor plan of the proposal, you'll see that the auto service use takes up most of the floor area, more than fifty percent. Uh, you have a garage, tire storage, um, offices and associated, uh, bathrooms for employees, et cetera. And then three units for future tenants, uh, retail or restaurant on the western portion. Uh, landscape plan, um, the proposed development shows a total of eleven and a half tree factors, which meets the minimum required for this site located along the frontage Forest Grove and then that private drive. Um, and we did note that, um, they did use a variation of tree species as encouraged by staff. Uh, elevations, um, there is no character design requirements for this area, but we'll note that this is, does the architectural theme complements surrounding development, um, siding, colors, et cetera. But you do, you can see the, uh, how the garage doors will, um, this is the, the lower elevation is what you'll see, the south elevation, um, facing Forest Grove Drive. And then the northern elevation is what will face the Iron T, um, the end of the driving range. Um, so not, there won't be any windows from the lights, et cetera. And then the side elevations, east and west. Given that, staff recommends approval of case twenty-four fifty-six, final plat for F G holding, F G eighty holding's fifth edition and case twenty-four fifty-seven, site development plan for lot three, F G eighty, which is the eight, F G eighty holdings, fifth edition. I can take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything to add from staff? Yeah. All right. Questions and comments from the commission, please? I've got one or two, maybe three. Um, the, the automotive use is tires?
The, well, I think it's at least tires. Um, they do have some fluid containment, um, identified in the, um, I don't know the business. Um, but they do have multiple automotive, um.
I saw the tire storage there. So tires and other
Yeah.
TBA, tire batteries and accessories. Okay. So one of my questions is where will the used or waste tires go? Cause they can't go in a dumpster.
Correct. That's, uh, staff hasn't not identified an area for that.
That would be a concern. I know some of the places have a trailer, you know, they'll put like a forty-two foot or a fifty-three foot trailer and stack them in there, but I don't think that would be. So that would be a question I have is what they're being done with the tires. And it's more probably on a permitting side and everything, but waste oil and other parts. And in the older days, you had exhaust systems and other scrap metal, like rotors and exhaust pipes and other things that would be collected by a scrap hauler. So I'm just in general, I guess, waste and in particular tires and other potentially recyclable materials pending pickup. And then I'm curious too, um, would the automotive use allow any used car sales there?
That would not. That's a separate use.
Okay.
So that use is not what's intended here. So, um, it's not a car lot use. The auto services are, they're broken down in our code pretty clearly. Um, so that's not a use that's contemplated here.
Okay.
We can, I think you've raised some really good questions. Cause I, as part of my other hat I wear is, uh, I also have a code enforcement division that works for me. And so we have had issues with other retailers not doing the best job taking care of those used tires especially. Um, so I think we'd like to get back with the applicant and just kind of clarify some of those questions. And then we'll, um, you know, we could even add the condition of, of course, used car sales are not allowed. If it's not a condition of code, but I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay. Others with the commission?
I think we could have those updated by the time it went to council. I don't think we could go back to P and Z if you're okay with that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's fine. If it, if it works for you, it works for me. You're the enforcement guy.
We gotta have either the tires, the storage of used or unused, used tires be identified because it could be within the building. If not, identify an area outside. Cause I believe then our storage, outdoor storage requirements would be enforced, which would require screening. And I believe, okay, they have to be.
Well, there can be issues with rainwater and mosquito.
That's not what we're trying to achieve here. So those are questions we can talk about.
Okay.
Maybe tighten up a little bit on the, on the application before it goes to P&amp;Z.
Okay, good. All right, anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter?
I'm sorry.
No? Okay, we'll come back to the commission then. Probably need to take this as two.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 24-056, subject to staff recommendations.
Second. Anne and Cory, all right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-056, replant, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. 24-056 is recommended for approval. 24-057?
I will move for approval of that case, the Site Development Plan, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
All right. Cory and Anne, you're on a roll. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-057, subject to staff recommendations. And I'll just clarify, and that includes resolving outside tire storage, because that's not one of the stipulated recommendations, but you're, you've got that on your radar. Okay, with that modification, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign. Thank you. 24-057 is recommended for approval with the additional information regarding outside tire storage, which takes us then to 24-058.
Thank you Chairman. Item 10 on the agenda, we have Site Development Plan for Lot One, Competition Corner First Edition, submitted by Quad City Bank and Trust. This area, southeast corner of Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive, the request is for a site development plan including a corporate office and financial service uses. The proposal contains a five-story building containing roughly 100,000 square feet of floor area. Associated parking, recreational amenities, and enhanced landscaping are also included with this proposal. Future land use and zoning, the future land use map designates this area as three categories, community cur, community commercial on the corner, so along Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive, then some greenway, and then transitioning into mixed transitional on its far east side. The submitted site plan, the entire area is zoned C2, and the submitted site plan is compliant with that C2's district, and really envisions the locations of those buildings, and then the location of the recreational amenities really is very consistent with what's envisioned on the future land use map. Taking a look at the site plan, the building, as mentioned, is situated in the northwest corner of the site and meets bulk standards for the site, that C2 zoning allows, I believe, up to a 10-story building. This is a five-story building, and the FAR values, et cetera, density calculations are met. Existing public streets front the development on the west and north sides, we have Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive. Proposed public streets are shown on east of the development, so this will be Remington Road. And then also south of the development, initially this drive was going to be private, but given the proposed developments surrounding this area, staff, engineering, has worked with the applicant, and this will, is proposed to be a public street, so it's unnamed public street. Access is shown via curb cut onto Forest Grove Drive, as Brent mentioned earlier, that's a right-in, right-out. We have the boulevard already built in the middle. And then we have multiple curb cuts on that unnamed street, so we have a curb cut, general entrance farther west, and I believe the exit for the drive-through financial, a little farther east, and then a curb cut for, this is the access to the lower level of the parking structure. So this is a bit unique. The parking structure, top floor and bottom floor are not accessible to each other, so the bottom floor will be accessed via card reader gate, entry and exit, and then the upper level will be at-grade, so that right-in, right-out entry will allow you to drive and park either in the parking, top floor of the parking structure, or continue west along the front of the building, and either exit out that far west entry. A total of 350 off-street spaces, parking spaces are provided, including six ADA spaces and four electric charging spaces. Those electric charging spaces are way, located away from the building, opposite of the building on the northwest corner of the site. An enclosed dumpster is located on-site and would be accessed right off, along that private drive, the exit of the drive-through financial services. The pickup and drop-off, or the pickup would be at off-hours specified in the application, so it wouldn't interfere with any drive-through services. Sufficient utility connections either exist on-site or being extended, such as water service along Remington, and there's current water main service on the west side. The proposal contains sufficient stormwater detention. There's a large, very large retention pond located on the eastern half of the development, and then there is some dry storage, I believe, located just southwest of the building as well. Recreational amenities include a proposed trail, an interior trail, that goes along the, the east detention pond, a pedestrian bridge which will traverse over the pond, an outdoor pavilion located on the southeast corner, an amphitheater which is built kind of into the topography on the northeast corner of that pond, and a food truck plaza shown in the southeast corner. Additional sidewalk and trail connections are shown along the proposed public streets, so we'll have sidewalks on those new proposed streets, and then connections are also shown to the existing trail on Forest Grove. And then, they have contemplated, Brent had already mentioned the expansion of Middle Road, so that is contemplated in the design of the site plan as well. So we have a lot of, the applicant submitted a abundant information with the rendering, the character and the landscaping, so I will show that, show it all. So here's the 3D rendering, the daytime one. It really contains modern architectural elements that staff contends are compatible, complement the character of the Middle Road Forest Grove area. You have the nighttime rendering as well. Elevation drawings showing all those floors. This is the at-grade, the north elevation. The west elevation, they will have the basement floors that will be walkouts onto a pa, employee patio, which will be pretty cool. South elevation as well, and east elevation. And here's that outdoor pavilion. It's really just a structure with open walls for employee use on the southeast side. The applicant has submitted a photometric plan, though the readings aren't probably legible on this picture. The proposed development will have less than one foot candle of light cross onto adjacent properties on all side, and staff will note that most intense lighting is evident on the western portion and the parking area of the development, while the eastern and southern portions are really designed to be natural landscape with the pond and the walking paths. You'll see a lot of plantings and, you know, really trying to blend into a prairie landscaped The landscape plan, this is the landscape plan for the entire site, disregard the, that's an error on the side, but this site exceeds the, I think it's over like triple the amount of the required landscaping for this site. And I'll go into more detail on specific amenities as this looks. Here we go. So, as mentioned, we have the pond area, which will be landscaped with that pedestrian bridge and the pavilion over here. The landscape plan really shows the amphitheater area built into the topography. The patio area will be on that walkout of the lowest level of the building. This shows the drive pond area on the southwest. Tree plantings all along, street frontages, which will be on all sides. And then the easements are also denoted, so we, they are adhering to our, there's a water main easement, and they are realigning a sewer main for this project, so that's what you'll see, that red kind of zigzagging through the property. So adhering to those. I will just go through the rest, it was included in the packet, but I was just kind of browse through some of these other exhibits, just to kind of give the general character of the design, and they put a lot of work into this, so, and they're very detailed as they're loading slowly. The tree examples for the, or the plant palette is shown, so we have a lot of tree variety, as we encourage that to not have a vulnerability from a certain future tree disease. And the plant palette is shown, and kind of some examples of the design elements that Staff recommends approval of case 2458, Site Development Plan for Lot One Competition Corner, the Quad City Bank and Trust. I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything from your perspective?
Nothing to add.
No? I'll just say wow. Again, I already said 17 years doing this, I will say that is the most comprehensive, I think, presentation and packet of information I've seen. It's awesome. It's a pleasure, frankly, to look at something that detailed and that comprehensive and well-thought-through. I can't wait to see something like that develop, so that's, that's my comment.
I am curious, how many employees they're anticipating having in this building?
That question.
So, I need to get to the mic.
Sure, let's, let's hear you officially.
Andrew Dasso, Prince of Architects, or Streamline Architects. The, so, they're basing the size of the building off of a 10-year projection, so as, the immediate need is around 300, the 10-year projection is around 400 or so, so. And that would include full-time, remote workers, even, say, like their Cedar Rapids office, a gentleman might have an office there, and they'll also have an office here in this office. So likely, from what we've been told, like, the parking won't ever be full. There's a lot of ins and outs and people coming and going, and I, you know, I think they're really excited about the possibility of how they can expand within this footprint, so.
Yeah, it's got amazing amenities. So I was like, well, they must be intending to have a lot of people around, you know, to utilize that, so, thanks for answering my curiosity, Andrew.
And I will note, they have provided 350 off-street spaces, and based off that square footage, which, we're, that's kind of getting into the off-street, our off-streets parking schedule, when you get that large square footage, it isn't probably as accurate, but it would suggest maybe 300 or so spaces, so. And then the rest would be, they have financial services, but I don't, they have drive-through, and I don't know how much will be inside, actually, but there probably will be some, yeah.
I was actually more just curious for the fact of, like, economical growth or bend, or if it's bringing in new opportunities for employment, so I think that's great.
Yeah, so, so Mark and I have a unique connection to this with our spouses, so I think we know a fair amount. So, this is not just Quad City Bank and Trust. They are branded as Quad City Bank and Trust, but it is QCR Holdings, you know, which is the parent company of the bank. They are growing and are getting close to another threshold that would require some additional staff to have to be brought on, you know, as they get a certain amount of assets, that's going to change their, their regulatory requirements, so I think that growth is built into that. They're also consolidating several locations across the Quad Cities into this building.
Yeah, their local brand is Quad City Bank and Trust, but they're, they're across multiple states with other brands. I think Missouri, Iowa, Illinois, Wisconsin, maybe?
QCRH is consolidating, but Quad City Bank's not planning to close.
Yep, that's still a separate brand, yeah.
Yeah, they're actually, I think, planning to add a few locations.
I think I'm coming out of my quasi-retirement just to work there. It's such an awesome looking place. Anne's coming with me, okay. All right, no.
I'm not saying I'm looking for a job.
Very impressive, yeah.
That would be a great place to work.
But, but in all sincerity, I mean, and Janessa, I mirror your comments exactly, I mean, that's, that will create a place where people want to work just because of the environment. I mean, notwithstanding the quality of the company, but if you've got a calling card like that for your campus, that's awesome, so.
I was curious about the use of the building as well, like you were saying, or like Scott earlier was like, most banks are turning into coffee shops, or, you know, they've gone so remote that they either don't have employees there, or even, you know, clients needed to go there, so I, yeah, I think this is great to create a, for the workspace and for the community.
Yeah, awesome.
And a couple of things that, you know, that Quad, QCRH, you know, has really become a partner with the city on this, so there are some things we're gonna be chipping in on, you know, the addition of the fourth leg of the roundabout, you know, we're gonna continue the aesthetic through there on Remington, so you'll see the pavers continue down through their medians, some of the landscaping. One thing we didn't actually mention, I should have on the Genesis side, but it applies here as well as, so Remington Road here is going to be a three-lane section, so it's going to mimic what we have on competition, because we do picture this extending all the way down. You may remember when we talked through final plat, that this will extend all the way down in the future, to hope well provide us another north-south connector, and since the majority of the future land use in this area is pretty heavy, we think a three-lane section would make a lot of sense through here. So developers are required to build a two-lane, we'll pay for the, the additional width. Probably we'll see something similar once we actually get into the nuts and bolts with Genesis, that north-south street I could see ending up needing to be a, a three-lane with a shared turn lane, keep traffic flowing through there.
Awesome, yeah. Glad to hear it.
The beautiful landscaping that you've already done out there, it's just, it's expanding into the whole neighborhood. You've set the bar really high, and now.
Yeah, really dived it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks great.
Anyone else with the commission?
All right.
Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 24-058, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-058, Site Development Plan for Competition Corner First Edition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 24-058 is recommended for approval, which then takes us to our commission update.
Mr. Chairman, Jacob Nepa is our intern for the summer. Tomorrow's his last day, so as a form of hazing, we're gonna make him do a presentation. He's already done one, he's done a good job. This is actually a trend we started a while back, just looking at some projects that we've done and how the neighborhoods around them are changing, the good, bad, indifferent, and just providing that historical data, so we kind of see the outcomes of the projects we approve. So he's gonna talk to you about Falcon Island, I believe.
No, I like that, and that, that provides some insight for us, because that topic has come up a lot. You know, the, you're gonna ruin my property value, and, and I'm hoping you're telling us we didn't, but looking forward to it. Okay, Jacob, please.
I have a commission update. So some background, the addition of commercial developments often worry nearby homeowners that the value of their property will decrease. At the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff has analyzed residential property values near adjacent commercial developments in Hunter Meadows Fourth Edition and Crow Ridge Estates Sixth Edition. There are multiple commercial developments located adjacent to Hunter Meadows Fourth Edition and Crow Ridge Estates Sixth Edition, both of which are single-family residential subdivisions. Some examples of commercial developments nearby include McDonald's that was built in 2012, Quikstar Gas Station in 2015, three multi-tenant buildings built in 1995, 2015, and 2016 respectively, a restaurant built in 1995, and two credit. sixteen, respectively, a restaurant built in nineteen ninety-five, and two credit unions built in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fifteen. For the analysis, the staff calculated assessed value changes between the years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four for adjacent residential properties. And all assessed property values increased by a minimum of twenty-two percent since twenty twenty. A more exhaustive report would need to be done to determine if this data is statistically significant, but at a minimum, everyone's property went up twenty-two percent. The staff contends that after construction of all commercial development in the area, adjacent residential areas did not witness any decrease in their property values over that four-year time span. In the future, this analysis could be expanded to compare the growth of these subdivisions to those in comparable areas of Bettendorf, not adjacent to any commercial developments, to determine if the data is statistically significant or not. That's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And just for the record, appreciate your contribution to the city this summer. It's been a pleasure to work with you and having you present and excited to see what you end up doing in your final career. So, and staff for working with him. I know sometimes it's not always easy to take in an extra person and go, but I think it's been a growing experience for everybody. So appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. It's been a great experience.
Yeah. Good. What time's the cake tomorrow?
I think we're having breakfast pizza, but I heard he already brought breakfast pizza. We had staff training on Tuesday and I guess he brought the breakfast pizza on Tuesday. So we're getting breakfast pizza again tomorrow.
He made him bring his own breakfast pizza to his own party?
No, no, we're paying for it. We're paying for it.
Oh, all right.
I think he brought it himself on Tuesday and I wasn't around.
All right.
I don't miss a lot of meals.
Good for you too. Me too. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.